I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. And at this time, we will take oral comments from the public. If there's anyone that wishes to comment on something not on the agenda, this is the appropriate time.
Thank you. Good evening and happy new year to all of you. Thank you for all your service to the city of Fortuna. I'm here to raise a concern about political signs being kept up after an election for too long, particularly the station, the Freedom Fuel Station owned by Mr. McWhorter in town on Main Street at 1666. I have five copies of my comments that I'm happy to provide to the members so you can follow along as you will. May I hand that to the police chief and let him move it up? Having said that, I may need a copy back because I don't see my comments on there. So... So, dear city council members, in the matter of Freedom Fuel's noncompliance of Fortuna City Municipal Code regarding the unlawful prolonged display of political signage at the subject business, I come here before you today in pursuit of enforcement of Fortuna Municipal Code Section 17.05.180 against Freedom Fuel at 166 Main Street, Fortuna, California, and the owner, Mr. S. McWhorter. The city code states that political signs, quote, "must be removed within 10 days of the election," end quote. This sign is affixed to the building and has not been removed or altered since before the November 2024 presidential election. As of this meeting, 62 days have passed since the election, allowing for the 10-day removal requirement. The sign has been posted for 52 days beyond your legally required imposed requirement. Shortly after the election, I notified the employees of the requirement to remove the dated election material and was told to take it up with Fortuna Police. I subsequently spoke to Officer Perez about this matter, and he stated he was not aware of such a requirement. I provided him the city code reference during my telephone contact with Officer Perez. He thought individuals had a First Amendment right to such signage, but agreed by the end of the call that this was a city matter. As the days passed, the sign remained, defiantly violating city code where every passerby could see city authority being flouted. In late November, I contacted City Planning Department, and the planning director stated that he meets with Mr. McWhorter on other topics and would bring it up to him. The planning director further stated that if no action occurred to address this matter, it would be referred to the code enforcement officer. In mid-December, I left a message for code enforcement officer Wayne Hanson, but have heard nothing from the code enforcement personnel since that time. The political sign remains. In asking for an update today, I was told Mr. McWhorter was notified by, of the city code, but that nothing has occurred to address this matter. I'm here today to ask that you rally city resources to address the city code you and your predecessors have created and deemed important enough to make law locally. I thank you for your time, and I would appreciate any kind of follow-up you can provide during your meetings, or if you want contact with me, I'll give you that information. And I will be providing the city a formal complaint tomorrow. I didn't realize I had to do that, but Mr. McWhorter has been notified. He's acknowledged that he understands this is your code and that he's in violation of it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public this evening? Seeing none, thank you. And we will move to proclamations. We have one proclamation this evening for National Mentoring Month. This is in recognition and support of National Mentoring Month, January 2025. Whereas this year, Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast, CASA of Humboldt, and Boys and Girls Clubs of the Redwoods celebrate 140 combined years of service to the youth in Humboldt County. Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast recognizes that the future of Humboldt County rests on the success of its youth. And whereas a mentor is a caring, consistent presence who devotes time to help a young person develop personal strength and achieve their potential through a structured, trusting relationship. Quality mentoring encourages positive choices, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. And whereas research shows that young people matched with a caring adult through a quality mentoring program are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 92% more likely to report participating regularly in extracurricular activities and sports, 78% more likely to volunteer, and twice as likely to say they held a leadership position than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas youth development experts agree that mentoring is critical to the social, emotional, and cognitive development of youth, helping them to navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. And whereas our community has a number of community volunteers, teachers, and many others who support the mentoring movement and work selflessly to improve our children's odds for success. And whereas our, the future of Fortuna rests on the success of its children and youth, now therefore, I, Mike Johnson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Fortuna, proclaim that January 2025 is a National Mentoring Month in the city of Fortuna, and thank all of the local heroes who participate in quality mentoring programs to equip our youth with the tools to lead healthy and productive lives. The city council also calls on residents to help close the gap between the availability of mentors and the number of children facing challenging circumstances who would love to spend time with a big brother, big sister, CASA advocate, or Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods mentor. It takes little to be big for National Mentoring Month. Signed this sixth day of January, City of Fortuna, State of California. Thank you very much for all of you. See you again in a quarter. Thank you.
Hello and good evening to those of you that are here present and those that are watching. We're just so grateful at Big Brothers Big Sisters. First of all, I'm the executive director. My name is Florence Parks. And we're just so grateful that we have the opportunity to work in this city. The city is, has so many wonderful opportunities for families to engage and also for our youth. But one thing we know about Humboldt County is that we are high in our adverse childhood experiences, which we call ACEs. But this year, what we're hoping to do is to focus not on our ACE scores, but on the positive experiences that our kids have. So increasing the number of those positive experiences and increasing, therefore, increasing their belongingness to the community. And what we can do individually, one is what we call spontaneous mentoring, where each of us give value to our children. And when we see them and we give them eye contact and we give them little nudges and little gems. So that spontaneous mentoring can happen at any moment with any of us. And then we ask that those of us that have more time, that you show up responsibly in opportunities to volunteer and civically engage in our community in other ways. And one of those could be at our school sites, after-school programs, and our schools have opportunities for us to volunteer. The McLean Foundation is investing so that we can have a after-school program here in Fortuna for our youth, so you can volunteer to become a big in that program. And another way that you can volunteer and be engaged in mentoring is through your connections and your own protective webs. Our nieces, nephews, friends, we know that kids need our support. We know that they need us to pass on the valuable lessons that we've learned. And so there's so many ways that we can get engaged, both formally and informally. And we invite you to celebrate and acknowledge that, this month especially, but throughout the entire year. What a great way to start the new year together and creating more community. So thank you for your time. Thank you for all that you already invest in our community, and thank you for your commitment to mentoring our youth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to the consent calendar. This evening, we have two items, the city council minutes from December 16th and the report of dispersments. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to council business. Our first item is the second reading and adoption of ordinance 2024-769, amending the Fortuna Municipal Code Title 17, zoning regulations to add Chapter 17.10, reasonable accommodation policy and procedure, and find amendments to be exempt from SEQA. And the second reading and adoption of ordinance 2024-772, amending the Fortuna Municipal Code Title 17, zoning regulations regarding single-room occupancy facilities, and finding that the amendments are exempt from SEQA. We have staff report.
We do. Good evening, Mayor Johnson and honorable council members. I'm Sheri Meads, your community development director. And this is our second reading of these ordinances. So I didn't, I could pull up the PowerPoint, but I just felt like, you know, just briefly reminding folks of what we're trying to do with these ordinances would be hopefully sufficient for everyone. And obviously, I can answer questions or pull up the PowerPoint at any point if that is desired. So the first of the two ordinances that we're talking about tonight is, as you mentioned, for the reasonable accommodation procedure. And how this has come about is that the city has an adopted general plan, which is like the constitution for the city. And one of the chapters within the general plan is the housing element. And that is a document that is standalone in some regards, but also part of the general plan. And we adopted our most recent housing element, which is called the Sixth Cycle, and it covers the period between 2019 and 2027. We adopted that on August 7, 2019. It fulfills the state of California requirements to provide for a variety of housing types and to encourage housing for all. So the California Department of Housing and Community Development, which most of you guys probably know of as HCD, that's typically what they're called, they enforce housing element implementation. And while the city of Fortuna has made some progress towards implementing the programs and policies that are in our housing element, we're behind on a lot. And it isn't through lack of desire to do this work. We're just really resource-strapped. And so it is, I'm trying to get us caught up now that I've been brought on board, but now we're even more staffing-strapped. So anyways, so the reason this is important is if a housing element is decertified, in other words, if HCD says, you know what, you guys aren't doing enough. We need you to do more, and we don't think, you know, that you're trying hard enough. We're going to decertify your housing element. What that could lead to is the city to lose grant funds that are already allocated to us, grant future opportunities, and significant monthly penalties. They are, HCD is fully staffed right now. Their enforcement team is out throughout the state doing these types of audits. In addition, developers could come in and take advantage of what's called the builder's remedy, which means they could pick a lot anywhere in the city and just bypass any zoning regulations or whatever. They could build a super-big high-rise that's super-noisy and super-polluting, maybe. And anyways, they'd be able to bypass regulations. So it's really important that we stay compliant with our housing element. This ordinance, the first one that we're talking about, implements housing element program H18, which is a requirement to formalize a process to provide individuals with disabilities reasonable accommodation in rules, policies, practices, and procedures to ensure equal access to housing and facilitate the development of housing for individuals with disabilities. And this is based on federal and state fair housing laws, which are detailed somewhat in the, in the staff report that you've seen twice now. And the idea is to allow a person with an identified and certain type of disability that follows under all of the rules of the Fair Housing Amendments and the California Fair Employment and Housing Act to apply for relief from certain zoning conditions or requirements. An example that I provided in the staff report, excuse me, would be for someone that maybe needed to build a wheelchair ramp, and they couldn't do that without encroaching into a setback that the city may require as a zoning requirement. Well, that individual or their representative could come to the city and say, listen, I've got this disability. I need a wheelchair. I need to be able to, you know, build the ramp. And then the community development director would evaluate that and approve or disprove. If there was any negative action taken by the community development director, that the person could appeal that to the city manager. But, you know, the idea is just to make sure that anybody that needs the type of request is granted that request. So the ordinance has followed the municipal code requirements for zoning regulation amendments in that it went to the planning commission first on December 10. They recommended approval to the council, who introduced and did a first reading on December 16. The item was noticed in compliance with city requirements. It is, fiscal impact is always part of our presentation, and so I will just mention that my time is covered through general fund amount, budget amounts. And then I always send ordinances to our legal team that's on contract, and that is part of the budget, too. So we, no extra expenditures based on this. The project was evaluated. The ordinance is exempt from SEQA pursuant to two SEQA guidelines sections, 15162 and 15061B3. And if approved, staff adopted, staff will file a notice of exemption as required by SEQA. So the planning commission and community development department recommend that the council adopt ordinance 2024-769 and read by title only. And that's it for the first one. Do you want me, since you have to vote on it, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And there will be an opportunity, this is a public hearing, for the public to weigh in on this, but I'd ask if there's any questions from council? Any public comment? Well, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to hold the second reading and adopt ordinance 2024-769 and read by title only.
Second. You have a motion and a second? Get a roll call?
Ordinance 2024-769, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna, to amend Fortuna Municipal Code Title 17, zoning regulations, to add Chapter 17.10, reasonable accommodations policies and procedures, and find the amendment to be exempt from additional California Environmental Quality Act review under SEQA guidelines, Section 15162 and 15061B3. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Thank you. Now, we can move on for the second reading and adoption of ordinance 2024-772.
Thank you again, Mayor Johnson and esteemed city council members. I'm Sheri Meads, your community development director. And this ordinance comes about for the same reasons. It is part of our housing element programs and policies. It is something that HCD, as mentioned, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, identified as a priority to them in their audit. They said these two ordinances that I'm bringing for the second reading tonight were the first, first step towards moving the needle, the direction they would like to see us go. So this ordinance implements housing element program H15, which is housing for extremely low-income households by amending the Fortuna Municipal Code to allow for single-room occupancy facilities in compliance with state law. So the state requires that we do this and that SRO facilities are not restricted more heavily than any other type of residential use. We can imply, apply certain standards, which you can see in the ordinance itself, which we've done. And SROs provide one of the least expensive forms of non-subsidized rental housing and can especially benefit seniors, persons with disabilities, and extremely low-income individuals. The proposed amendments do allow the single-room occupancy facilities, compliant with the appropriate parking, development, management, and other standards, they would be allowed by right in the primary residential districts and with a conditional use permit in commercial and industrial zoning districts based on where other residential uses are allowed. In the industrial and the commercial districts, they're allowed with a conditional use permit. So these would be evaluated. It's not an automatic thing, and we would make sure that they were compatible with whatever they were surrounded by or that would be surrounding them in the future. So again, this is an amendment to several different sections in the code that are all included as exhibits to the draft ordinance. It has followed the same procedure as the previous ordinance in that it went to the planning commission for recommendation of approval on December 10, followed by the introduction and first reading by this body, with one new addition today, on December 16. The item was noticed in compliance with city requirements. There was, there's no fiscal impact based on the ordinance preparation, and the ordinance is exempt from SEQA pursuant to the same two SEQA guideline sections, 15162 and 15061B3. And again, staff will file a notice of exemption upon adoption as SEQA requires. So with that, the planning commission and the community development department recommend that the council adopt 20, ordinance 2024-772 and read by title only. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Counsel have any questions? And again, we have an opportunity for the public to weigh in if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak on this. None? Will we close the public hearing and...
I'll make a motion to hold the second reading and adopt ordinance 2024-772 and read by title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second? Roll call?
Ordinance 2024-772, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna, amending Fortuna Municipal Code Title 17, zoning regulations regarding single-room occupancy facilities, and finding the amendments to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Section 15162 and 15061B3. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. And thank you. Now, we can move on to introduction and first reading of Organic Waste Disposal Ordinance 2024-770 and amendment.
Honorable mayor and council, back in August of last year, the Organic Reduction Recycling Ordinance 2024-770 was adopted by the council. The ordinance amended Title 8, Health and Safety of the Fortuna Municipal Code by adding after, adding Chapter 14, Organic Reduction and Recycling. Chapter, Section 70 defines the requirements for commercial edible food generators and has been found to be incomplete under development of the Commercial Edible Food Recovery Program by Bound Food Care over the past year. The program requires that commercial edible food generators facilities under contract with food recovery organizations must be inspected annually, and the ordinance currently does not address that language. The Humboldt County Department of Environmental Health, DEH, has served as the city of Fortuna health officer since 1977. Given this historic relation, relationship for health-related regulation and oversight, the city has requested that DEH perform commercial edible food generator facility inspections. DEH is obliged, but they requested that the city enforce the same requirements that they have for generators in their jurisdiction, and that is that they register with environmental health, they pay a fee, and they submit to an annual inspection. In order to achieve that, staff has added language to Section 70, subsection, Section 70, adding subsection C9, which deals with the registration and the fee payment, and section C10, which addresses the inspection. Also, while going over this, these edits and amendments, staff noticed some, a little bit of clarification to Section C70, just adding more the subject of what it was talking about. It didn't, it was talking about edible food generators, but it didn't say edible food generators anywhere. So that was added to the thing, to that section. Today, the county has not established the fees for registration inspection, and they are, they are currently working on this as we are doing it at the same time simultaneously, basically. But it's my understanding that for non-retail generators, it'll be about 80 bucks, and for retail generators, it'll be in the 180, 170 range, roughly. As far as fiscal impact to the city, there will be none. All fees will be paid by the commercial edible food generators. So staff recommends first reading by title of these amendments to that ordinance.
Okay, thank you. And any questions, comments from council? I just, for clarification, I think this is edible food generation, so I'm assuming that the inspection and such is for, to ensure that the food is held at a proper temperature and clean conditions, and did they give you the parameters of what they're inspecting or...
This is all, all of this SB 1383 recycling organic stuff, it's all just happening up in Humboldt and many of the rural communities. So I don't know exactly what they are off the top of my head. What I do imagine they would be is that they do have a place where food that is becoming close to its expiration date, and they're going to pull off the shelf, that they do keep that, as you said, in a place that keeps it edible. And throughout that whole section, it addresses various things about that they are required to not intentionally spoil food and things like that. So I'd imagine looking for the things that are their requirements would be what the inspection would be about.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce and conduct the first reading, and conduct a first reading by title only of amendments to ordinance 2024-770, and continue the public hearing to January 21st, 2025.
Second. Have a motion and a second?
Ordinance 2024-770, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna, California, amending Title 8, Health and Safety of the Fortuna Municipal Code by revising Chapter 8.14, Organic Reduction and Recycling Ordinance. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Now on to city council appointments to various boards and commissions.
This last item is mine. Honorable Mayor Johnson?
This last item is mine, Honorable Mayor Johnson, council members. I'm sure you were able to review the information that was laid out in the staff report pretty straightforward. I'm sorry, I'm Sienna Emmons, and I put this staff report together in my capacity as city clerk. This is for basically outside appointments for other agencies. I put together a brief PowerPoint so I could kind of capture this for the benefit of the public and just for efficiency of the conversation. Council members can be appointed to outside agencies, boards, and commissions, and typically appointments are made during election years, at the last meeting of the year, or the first meeting of the new year. Appointments are generally made after council discussion and approval by the mayor, and I provided attachment A in your staff report, which kind of lined out all of the seats that are available and where the appointments are made now. This meeting is the opportunity for you to discuss the current appointments and talk about whether everybody is comfortable with where their appointments are and if there are any interest in changing those seats or appointments. And so what I did was I outlined this PowerPoint to kind of take a look at each seat individually, what the current appointment is, who the current alternate is, and then if we want to make changes, I'll make note as we go through it. If not, we will mark it off and move to the next.
Okay.
Does that seem like a clear approach?
Oh.
Do you have any questions?
No, you got it laid out here pretty well.
So the first one is the Humboldt County Association of Governments, or also known as HCOG. It's our local, our regional transportation planning agency, and you can see by the slide that the current appointee is Mike Johnson and that Chris Mobley is the alternate.
I would like to stay there if I can with the, we're in the middle of finding a new executive director, and we have our first meeting with the Personnel Agency next Tuesday. So I would like to make that meeting, so.
All for it. How about?
Okay, I believe there's consensus. Yes.
Have you checked with councilperson Mobley to see if she wants to remain an alternate?
I have not checked with her. I got her text kind of late in the evening, but we can circle back around and make sure that she's still available to serve on the alternacy.
Yeah, she should have the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
And we can move on to HTA.
HTA. Oops, sorry. Here we go. So currently, Mayor, Mayor Protem Trent is the appointee, and the alternate is vacant.
I'd like to make a correction on that. The meetings are the first Wednesday of the month.
And I thank you for that. I didn't go too far down the rabbit hole in going into the agency's website, so some of them might have changed since the information on the spreadsheet that I used. Thank you.
You're welcome, and I'd like to heap that.
Any interest in an alternate?
I was going to say, do we have anybody that wants to be an alternate there?
Well, being the new kid on the block, I'll serve at the pleasure of the mayor in any position you want, so I'm leaving it up to you.
Well, that's actually, I mean, it's an important position, too. It's not.
I, I'll be the alternate for that one, because I see some down the list that I'd rather fill this hole than that hole, so.
Okay, consensus that Councilmember Conley will become the alternate. Next one is Redwood Region Economic Development Corporation, or REDEC. Councilmember Conley's currently the appointee.
I would like to see if someone would like to switch positions with this, as there are some other committees that we're kind of discussing that I'd like to fill holes in, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to fill that role if you would like to put me there.
I think as a business person, you'd probably like that one. What do you think, folks?
I think that's a good idea.
Yep.
Okay.
We'll move in that direction.
Okay. And any interest in an alternate?
I'll, I'll say alternate. I just want to switch and not be primary.
Thank you.
Perfect.
All right. Moving on. Fortuna Business Improvement District, FBID.
Chris isn't here, but I think she is enjoying that from what I understand, being in that.
So I didn't mention this earlier, but I should have. These appointments are not set for the duration of your term, so if at some point a schedule change happens or meetings start taking place at a time that doesn't work, we can revisit these appointments.
I was going to suggest if, when Councilmember Mobley comes back, if there's any changes that she wants to make, she has an opportunity to speak about them.
Okay. Whoops. I'm sorry. Too many things.
And I would like to stay as alternate.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Parks and Recreation.
You're interested in that?
Yeah, I am interested in that, so I will throw my head, my name for that one.
You want to be the alternate there, you think?
Oh, I can't.
I don't know. Did we, did we miss one? Hang on. Bear with me.
No, that's the one that's appointed by the mayor's commission.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
It's like I've never done this. Okay. So Kyle, are you?
I would like to be interested in the.
Okay. And an alternate?
Yeah, I'll be happy to serve as his alternate. He's got kids in the program, I got grandkids, so. We have, we both are very interested in their outcome.
And the Historical Commission currently, Mayor Johnson is the appointee and Chris Mobley's the alternate.
I'll just, I'd just soon say, yes, continue on.
Fine with me.
And Redwood Coast Energy Authority?
This is the one with my employer. I'd rather not be on this one.
And again, Chris isn't here, but she can weigh in at the next opportunity.
Okay. And then the last one, I think, is the Indian Gaming Committee. Right now, it's Mayor Protem Trent.
I'll keep that one. I've been on it for almost 12 years, and we've never had a meeting.
I was the.
Sounds like I want to be the alternate.
Yeah. Okay, and the actual last one, again, it's Chris, but it is the Redevelopment Oversight Board, and that one actually acts a little bit differently because it's an appointed position, so it's good that we have a seat at that table currently. And with that, if we could just get, if I could just get a motion approving the recommended appointees, then we can be done.
I make a motion to appoint the recommended appointees with the follow-up with Councilmember Mobley on whether she agrees at the time.
Yeah, last second then.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. Thank you all, and now we can move down to future agenda items. I know this was one. We accomplished it. Any other? Doesn't look like we have any, so how about council reports, beginning with Councilmember Conley?
Thank you. REDEC doesn't do much during the Christmas time, but it's always like the same time as Christmas. We stayed away from that meeting, and we actually are foregoing our next meeting, but there is a Humboldt County initiative that was started by Supervisor Arroyo, and she has interviewed 50-plus medical professionals out of Humboldt County, and she's going to have a good portion of those on a panel, including the CEO of Open Door, the director of both the hospitals in Mad River, there to talk about the doctor shortage in Humboldt County, and they're having an open forum on January 27th in the Eureka Vets Building. So if you want to attend, there's going to be a limited amount of tickets that will be coming out soon. You'll see a press release kind of thing come out for that. There'll also be a live stream of it, so if you wanted to watch that. But she put a lot of work in kind of how we can keep our doctors in Humboldt County and how to recruit, so she put a lot of work into it, so if you're interested in that, please attend or look into it.
Thank you.
Well, I just got on committee, so I don't have anything to report from that, but again, being the new kid on the block, I want to thank a couple people. I didn't do that when I was seated last session, but I wanted to thank my fellow council members for giving me advice along the way, making tonight easier for me. I want to thank the staff, everyone that I talked to and the ones that I'm going to talk to. I learned a lot from that. I plan on learning a lot more from you on that. And lastly, the City of Fortuna, the citizens, for participating in the process and being involved and sitting out there or voting. It's important. We're here to serve the city. That's it. And so you are who we serve, and I want to thank you for, for being here and for voting. And that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Trent?
I don't have much to report, but I will report that I did actually just today attend Michelle Bush Chanel's swearing in to, for her new term, and she had quite a large crowd there for that, and I'm happy that she is continuing. She's done a good job for us. She represents us well. She wasn't able to be here tonight. She has an early meeting tomorrow morning. She's the new chair of the Board of Supervisors this year, so she's preparing for that, but I just want to thank her, thank her for all she does for Fortuna. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Well, I have, as I said, a HCOG meeting next week. We have a meeting regarding the Executive Director Search Committee on Tuesday, and then the regular Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting on Thursday, and have a Historical Commission meeting this coming Wednesday. So I don't have anything to report since the last meeting, but I have a lot of meetings coming up. So that's all I have at this time, and I would just say that at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.